Hello and welcome to the 2018 debate for the East Long Meadow School Committee. I am Patrick Barhu, I'll be moderating today's debate and with me today are both candidates for the election Susan Mantoni and Sarah Trullio who are asking for your vote on June 5th. I will ask a number of questions related to a variety of different issues to help the voters make a qualified decision. Today we'll begin with opening statements from each candidate, so Mrs. Mantoni you can begin.
Thank you. I want to thank Patrick Barhu and Elcat for having us, giving us the opportunity to discuss with you the various topics that have been chosen for us this evening. I'd like to congratulate Sarah on advancing to the general election as well. My vision for East Long Meadow Public Schools is that we unite as a community to support students of the East Long Meadow Public Schools and provide them with resources that they need to lay the foundation for solid education while learning in a safe environment. Should I be elected as school committee member, I would have three children at the elementary, middle, and high school educational levels. For the past nine years, I have been an actively involved parent volunteering within the East Long Meadow Public Schools and want to continue to make a difference both in and out of the classrooms. If you take a look at the various projects that I have been involved in, there is one common denominator in that being safety. In order to acquire a balance between 21st century learning and safe conditions, it all stems from having a healthy budget and being fiscally responsible to use those funds appropriately. I plan to bring creative perspective to this committee and provide myself on being a leader and a person of integrity. Students of East Long Meadow Public Schools and this community deserve nothing but the best and I would be honored to have the opportunity to part of their success.
Thank you, Ms. Trullio.
Good evening. Similarly to Sue, I would like to begin by thanking Elcat Studios, Patrick, and Dawn for providing us with this venue to really showcase our platforms and the concerns that are most pressing for us and the district as a whole as well as the community. Giving back to the community is something that I've been extremely passionate about. When I first graduated from Smith College with a degree in education and child study, I then went on to pursue my master's degree in educational policy and knew from that moment that I wanted to come back to the community that I grew up in, which was Springfield, and continued to provide service to the community that I was a part of. I've been in Springfield Public Schools for approximately 13 years now. I've served in multiple capacities there, both as an educator, a building-based math coach, and also as a math supervisor, which is the current role that I serve now. I really see that my knowledge and experience that I've brought forth over those past 13 years could really be of service to the community that I am now a part of. My husband and I have lived here for nearly a decade at this point. We also have two children who are, we are raising in East Long Meadow and I look forward to bringing the knowledge and experience that I have to the East Long Meadow Public School System if elected and I look forward to answering your questions this evening and really providing a foundation for where I would like to see the school department head. Thank you.
Great, thank you both. So now we'll start the question and answer portion of the debate. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each original question and then there will be 45 seconds to answer any follow-up questions that may arise. I will begin with Mrs. Mantoni. The East Long Meadow School Department has attempted to maintain school infrastructure by investing in capital projects that keep the schools functional. What capital projects do you foresee the school committee prioritizing in the coming years? And how would you assess what projects are truly essential should you be elected?
Sure, very good question Patrick. Currently, there are 39 items that are on the five-year capital plan. 14 of those items have been submitted to the town council for approval for fiscal year 19. There were five supplemental requests as well that were submitted for fiscal year 19. I did attend the budget proposal meeting as well as the town council's meeting to listen to the town manager's recommendation for the budget. Although the budget was not recently approved, at least to date, I do feel comfortable with the projects that the town manager has isolated as priorities, being that out of the 14, there are seven of them listed on the capital plan. Those being the high school security modifications, the clock and the bell system which will provide safety and allow the timing for the schools to be on track and synchronized, the teacher device replacement for Meadowbrook School and the high school, as well as the Meadowbrook door and window renovations that were recently part of the MSBA's accelerated repair program, and then the modular classroom replacements, maple shades interior door replacements, and maple shades replacing their steam piping installation.
Thank you, Ms. Trullio.
So I agree 100% with Ms. Mantoni that the town has made some really difficult decisions in terms of the current budget and that they have pushed forward projects that are really critical to ensuring the safety and integrity of the infrastructure here in town. I also think that school priorities shift over time and that one of our main focuses as we continue to pursue capital projects is ensuring that our students' safety but also educational opportunities are really being pursued in a fashion that allows our students to have access to the materials and the infrastructure that's going to support a 21st learning, 21st century learning environment. So while I agree with the town, I would continue to pursue interests that really provide our students' educational opportunities within the given infrastructure to ensure that we are not lagging behind in terms of what type, how our infrastructure is potentially impacting the types of educational opportunities our students have access to. With that being said, I think one of the other key priorities that we have to maintain is the idea that as we continue to build upon the technology that's being used within the district, we need to ensure that our infrastructure can sustain that. So as we move forward with the one-to-one initiative, really ensuring that the electrical systems have the capacity to maintain those great devices, because we don't want to see our town invest in something that then we can't sustain because of an infrastructure concern. With that being said, I think that the buildings have been maintained wonderfully so far and that the town council has elevated what are the most pressing concerns through a really informed process, especially when it comes to the infrastructure, and I look forward to continuing to pursue those and making sure that whatever infrastructure we are taking advantage of in terms of the budget is really in alignment with providing not only student safety but also educational opportunities. Thanks.
Great, thank you. So right back to you, Ms. Trullio.
Yes.
Town Council Vice President Mike Kane has indicated at a number of town council meetings that the town is losing thousands of dollars in expense to educate students who reside outside of the district and fraudently attend East Long Meadow Public Schools. Superintendent Gordon Smith stated at the April 24th town council meeting that there were four proven cases of this in this past school year. Should the East Long Meadow Public School System create another position to address this problem as Councillor Kane has suggested?
I think right now when we begin to think about pursuing students who possibly reside outside of district but are obtaining in district services, the first thing we need to do is take care of the safety and security of the child and ensure that we are really pursuing these cases in a way that's sensitive, because there is a student at the heart of the matter there. And we need to ensure that families are being given the privacy that they may need, because there are a ton of extenuating circumstances that can cause an investigation to start. Families go through divorce, families go through childcare issues where, you know, we really have to make sure that we're being sincere and honest in terms of how we are pursuing these cases. Currently, I don't necessarily think that we need to institute an additional position. I think the way that the school committee and the superintendent has handled these cases so far and utilizing the outside agency is pursuant in terms of being able to really find, especially when we think about the fact that there's four cases that have actually registered and have come to the forefront, but I think that we should continue the course that we've laid, but just ensuring that at all times we're maintaining confidentiality, we're maintaining the safety and security of the students that we are servicing, because we don't want to at any point leave our families or our students feeling that their personal concerns and the personal matters that the folks are going through should trump what's really happening in terms of pursuing the out-of-district potential placement.
Great, thank you, Ms. Mantoni.
I agree with Sarah in regards to the fact of confidentiality and that first and foremost, it's the protection of the student. And whatever decisions that the parents make as far as whether or not they're putting a child that doesn't belong in district, in district, that has nothing to do with the child. And so I think that at this point in time, I also agree with Sarah, that a position is not necessarily, needs to be made at this point in time with there being four documented cases. I think that the town has done a good job evaluating those and handling those going forward. I do agree with the outside services of using the investigator that they currently have, as well as the process of enrolling children that the town utilizes, asking for the documentation. I think it's very difficult this day and age to determine really where a child lives as far as if they can produce that paperwork for that child, that the child is residing there, then I think we're hard-pressed to argue that. I also think that there's been figures that have been thrown out to the public that may not be so accurate and we probably should really sit down and do our homework to see exactly where we stand with the expenses of whether or not the child belongs in district or out of district.
Awesome, thank you. So Ms. Mantoni. Each year, the school department submits a list of supplemental increases to the town manager for her to include in the annual budget. At its May 2nd meeting, the town council voted to only include in the fiscal 2019 budget 203,000 of the $291,000 supplemental increases the school committee asked for. Since then, the newly-formed budget subcommittee has considered further cuts to the supplemental requests from all departments including schools. It's May 16th, the budget is due June 1st. What suggestions would you make as a school committee member to ensure that the council and school committee have a realistic picture of needs and resources earlier in the process?
Okay, what I would like the town council to understand is that there is a real need right now for the school to have an intensive special needs teacher. We have students currently at Burchland Park Middle School that are going to be moving to the high school and currently they're working on the rooms to accommodate these children and therefore, no matter what, that is a need for the school. I believe it's a $60,000, $63,000 position that really, no matter what, that's going to be incurred by the school system. So to knock that off of the supplemental request would really be a hardship on the school's budget. Secondly, there's the need for a special education teacher with training with social and emotional issues. It really needs to be supported at the middle school level for grade six to eight. You know, the importance for social-emotional education right now for these children, not only at a middle school level, it's going to affect the children moving on to the high school as well. So there is definitely a benefit to having these two positions. Like I said, the first position is, it's got to come no matter what. The second teacher, out of all five of the budgetary supplemental suggestions that have been recommended, those are the two that are very important for the town council to consider not making cuts on.
Thank you, Ms. Trullio.
Absolutely. Similarly to Ms. Mantoni, to Sue, I really agree in terms of the social-emotional needs of students being paramount. That's something that over the course of this campaign that I have continued to go back to and that's the idea of educating the whole child and ensuring that the social-emotional needs of students are met. I applaud the town council in terms of being able to continue to come back to the budget. I do think that based on the short amount of time regarding the window that we have, it's probably creating a little bit of angst for all of the departments, but especially the school department, as that's the one that I'm most privy to being exposed to. I think that as we continue to examine this new form of government, which is extremely exciting for our town, that we need to ensure that the processes by which we're pursuing budgets are really in alignment with the needs of all the departments. But when you even look at the term supplementary, I would, like I said, I do agree with Sue that those two requests in terms of the social-emotional aspects, the need for the high school teacher and then also the need to continue to pursue social and emotional interest at the middle school level are paramount. However, any of the requests that were listed as supplementary, really that title is misleading, to say the very least. The school department, the senior leadership, the building-level leadership, as well as the school committee, really took a critical look at the current needs of students and the current demands of creating a 21st century learning environment and really structured those supplementary requests in such a way that the term is really lacking what they're actually trying to describe. Those are real needs across all of the buildings and they are really meant to ensure that our students in East Long Meadow continue to receive the services and are afforded the opportunities to really not only stay the course in town and to survive in an ever-changing workforce, but to really be able to chart it and be 21st century, not just learners but leaders. And I really hope that as we move forward with this new form of government, that we continue to refine that process so that we're all really making these decisions in a truly-informed fashion.
Thank you.
Can I just add to that for one second?
Yeah, 45 seconds.
I just want to agree with Sarah in the fact that the school committee did submit their requests with a lot of intricate decisions that they made to make sure that what they did submit for the budget was necessities. So I think that the town council, as they look at, you know, the school's budget and decide on what to approve and what to make cuts, that wherever they make the cuts with the school department, is that it's going to put a hardship on the budget going forward for decisions that are going to be made. So I do hope that when they take the second look, and it sounds like they've had quite a few meetings, that they take that into consideration, that these were not overzealous requests, these are requests that are necessities.
Great, thank you. So Ms. Trullio.
Yes.
For each of the past five years, East Long Meadow has submitted a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in order to try and receive state funding for the construction of a new high school. How confident are you that the state will allow the town into this process and what options will the town have to consider if we are not invited in?
Absolutely. So I'd like to begin by saying, myself and Sue had a wonderful opportunity last week to really take a tour with the superintendent, members of the DPW, really concerned families, and also other candidates for other local offices, and really being able to see first of all how well-maintained the current structure is, given all of the demands on the school budgets. We really, you really can't say enough about the commitment that's been made to maintaining the current infrastructure. With that being said, we are operating currently under a building that's nearly 60 years old. Standards have changed, the demands placed on students have changed, the demands placed on educators have changed. So if we're going to continue to really be able to provide a high-quality educational experience that is in alignment with the next-generation science standards and the practices associated with those, which include a host of different lab opportunities for students, the same to be said about the math standards and the English language art standards that have changed, the incorporation of digital literacy and computer science standards, we need to make sure that the high school itself in terms of the structures allows for those 21st century learning experience, which include collaborative spaces, the ability to have more technology, communication, critical thinking. So all that being said, I think that the facility itself has been maintained beautifully and I think that one really great indicator that hopefully we're continuing to move up the chain in terms of where we fall with MSBA is, as Sue mentioned earlier, having Meadowbrook be accepted into the accelerated program in terms of the replacement of the windows and the doors is a great indication. So I think we continue to remain optimistic. I think that if we are, if we are not accepted, that we have to continue to stay the course because the financial burden without the 55% reimbursement rate, I think would be one that we'd really have to garner some large-scale support around, but I think you have to stay optimistic, continue that course. And I think then we have to also look to see the fact that we have potential for new businesses all the time coming into this town and if we have to maybe reliance of business partnerships as well as we continue to chart the course for the high school if we aren't accepted into MSBA.
Great, thank you. Ms. Mantoni.
I agree with a lot of what Sarah has just said. I think that what's hard for the students in all of this is that you have a newer middle school that they're coming from that is geared more towards the instructional learning of today. They've got the Makerspace over there, they're going to be moving forward with the robotics after-school program. And so I think that, you know, these children are sitting in a school right now that yes, it has been maintained to the degree of the vestability with the resources that the town has. However, with the way that learning has changed from an instructional, individual, you know, structural, your pens and paper, you're sitting at a desk with the teacher instructing, do you walk into a school nowadays, even at an elementary level, these children aren't just sitting at their desks and doing, you know, the busy work, they're working in groups collaboratively. They need that flexible environment space in order to do, whether it's project-oriented learning, whether it's individual learning, whether it's, you know, group settings. So, you know, with the, it's just not conducive right now to 21st century learning that these school, that these kids need. And like I said, you're basically restricting the middle school kids on, taking them from a school that's a newer design and now putting them into an older school that was built in the 1960s. Additionally, I would just like to say that, you know, that it's just, you know, walking through that school on that tour, I graduated from East Long Meadow High School in 1994. I really hope and that this will be the year that MSBA will give the approval. I am optimistic about it. It's not, right now, in my opinion, a very safe learning environment for these kids with the leaky roofs that are going on, the tiles that are right now lifting from the ceilings, the warping of the tiles, the floors that are lifting because of, you know, the flooding. Again, the town has done the best with this school, maintaining it as much as possible. We need to continue to maintain it, because if we do get approved by MSBA, it's a good six-to-seven-year process. Right now, these kids walking into this school, you know, it's not the best learning environment for them to be and I really hope that the MSBA comes, you know, forward this year with an approval.
Are there two points that I could just add on, since this is such a rich topic and one that I know Sue and I have been engrossed in over the past month or so? But I do think that as we continue to pursue the work with MSBA and through the statement of interest, we also need to ensure that we're bringing along local elected officials to ensure that they're really seeing the condition of the high school. Sometimes what you see on paper doesn't necessarily translate and even for myself, having not gone to East Long Meadow Public Schools but touring many facilities across Western Mass as a function of my current position, it is striking to see the difference in terms of what types of experiences students are being afforded here in town as opposed to the experiences that they're being afforded in other communities. And I think as we continue to garner support in terms of all of us here in the community and seeing this as a true priority and not just seeing this as something of a priority for families who have child or high school-aged students, but really seeing this as something that could impact potential home values down the road, that we really need to be able to continue to mobilize our entire community around this issue, but also need to garner the support of our other local officials that we can continue to pursue this with the state.
Great, thank you. Ms. Mantoni. East Long Meadow High School Athletic Director Kevin McGee has come to the school committee a number of times now to request permission for middle school students to be allowed to participate in high school sports, such as wrestling, hockey, and swimming. Do you support allowing middle-aged, middle school-aged students to participate in high school sports and is that the best solution to the problem of low participation rates among high school students in some sports?
I think the best solution would be try to figure out why are the numbers down as far as those areas and those sports that are affected with the low numbers that we need to bring in the middle schoolers. I believe in speaking with Mr. McGee that actually across the board, we are up probably 10% in participation. So overall with the sports, we're not down in numbers, but there are certain sports that are down in numbers and I think we need to take a look at why that is and therefore maybe we can help, you know, fix that problem. I'm not opposed to having middle schoolers by no means to help bring in the numbers, especially when we're considering eighth grade, because then it's just a one-year, a one-year difference and any sport that, sports that's going on nowadays, kids are playing up a level. But I think as far as from a high school perspective, we should be trying to figure out why are the numbers down in those specific sports and therefore maybe we can, you know, recruit more of the high schoolers to come back and to play. So that would be my recommendation on where to go with that issue.
Awesome, thank you. Ms. Trullio.
Similarly, I think also being able to work across departments, so being able to possibly reach out to the recreation department to ensure that our sports programs within the town are really grooming and allowing our students to have those experiences at a younger age that they want to stay, pursuing them as they get up into the high school, high school sports. I think as we continue to think about athletics, there could be other things that our students are opting into, so we might want to do some fact-finding. Maybe it's not that it's those particular sports, but maybe we're opting into other clubs or other opportunities that the high school might be offering that maybe they weren't offering in the past. So being able to also have that fact-finding time to kind of say, like Ms., like Sue just said, why are students not necessarily enrolling, but then also working with the recreation department to ensure that our in-town programs are really providing opportunities that encourage kids to want to pursue athletics as they go up into high school. With that being said, I think it would be really important as well to hear from families to ensure that they felt comfortable with that shift. I know right now we have certain cases where we have middle schoolers riding the bus with high schoolers, so I don't think, especially when we're talking about eighth grade, that that's a huge shift in terms of age, but at the same time, I think we'd want to make sure that we're talking to families, talking to middle school teachers, talking to high school teachers, and maybe reaching out to some of the local districts that actually do allow for those waivers and see what their experiences have been, can learn from them, and continue to ensure that as students want to pursue these extracurriculars, that we're doing so in a really safe and responsible fashion.
Thank you. Trullio again. The East Long Meadow School Committee recently voted to outsource transportation to the LPVAC, Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative.
Yes.
With this decision going into effect June 19th, how can you as a school committee member make sure this transition is an easy one for families and what steps do you hope to see the school committee take to ensure services are just as successful with the collaborative?
Excellent. So I think it was a really financially savvy decision that was made on behalf of the school committee. I think in terms of the long-term benefits financially, the school committee in terms of the budget is no longer going to have to incur the cost of having to replace vehicles, they're not going to have to incur the employee benefit costs. I think that it was, it's really financially extremely smart decision moving forward. I also know that in part of the conversations with the Lower Pioneer Valley Education Collaborative that there were also assurances made in terms of maintaining the routes and the current drivers that will be allowed to kind of maintain the status quo in terms of the experiences that both students and families are having when it comes to how their child is transported back and forth. With that being said, I would hope that when we go forward with this work, that we would be willing to hear from not only the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, but from the bus drivers, from the students, from the families, and also from the members of the school committee to really make sure that the services are not being disrupted, that we have that continuity, so that even though the decision was made, we want to make sure that the decision was being made in the best interest of students. So while it's great that we're being fiscally responsible and really looking to mitigate that figure and really long-term have that savings, we also need to ensure that at no time is our students or families feeling like they're not receiving the same quality of services that they have in the past. So I think that we need to continue to hear from all of the stakeholders involved in that conversation, but also know that the decision should be looked at in terms of how can we make sure that everyone is still feeling comfortable and confident in the transportation services provided by the district.
Great, thank you. Ms. Mantoni.
I agree with Sarah on this one as well, that, you know, we want families to be comfortable, we want the kids to be safe. And I know that it's not easy when change comes about and I know that the community right now is really nervous about the transportation changes and I believe that there's miscommunication as far as exactly where the drivers, drivers really stand. I know the school committee has done a great job trying to negotiate with the LPVAC to make this happen. I know that they want this process to have as seamless of a transition as it possibly can. I think it's wonderful that they were able to negotiate having Becky be involved with transportation. She will be establishing and maintaining all of the routes as well as acting as a liaison between the community and the LPVAC. So as far as the community stands with transportation, as far as if there's any concern, sometimes, you know, if a parent's not home, who do they call? They'll be calling Becky, normal process, same process as usual. In turn, she will contact LPVAC and make sure that that child is, remains safe. And second of all, I think that they did a really good job as well with trying to keep the drivers within our district. I believe there were a total of 19 drivers and 15 of them will still be employed through the LPVAC servicing their routes at least for the first year. Yes, there is a great savings with this program. I believe for the first year, they're expected to see about $100,000 savings and, you know, then going forward. But first and foremost, it is the safety of our children and obviously families feel comfortable with the drivers that they currently have and it would be really nice if the LPVAC would allow them to remain in their routes going forward.
Awesome, thank you. Ms. Mantoni. Each year, the school committee votes on school choice in East Long Meadow. With a 3 to 2 vote this year, the school committee again voted not to offer school choice for the 2018-2019 school year. Do you support school choice in East Long Meadow and what factors do you believe go into making this decision?
I personally do not support school choice in East Long Meadow, at least not at this time. Rather than seeing our class sizes grow, I would rather see them come down a little bit. I think that the teachers have their hands full right now and it's a difficult job teaching students in creative ways to meet the needs of every student within the classroom and I just don't think it would be fair for them to increase the sizes even if the school choice participation numbers are low. I think that school committee did raise some valid concerns as a member of this community. I don't think I'd be very happy at a high school level if my child couldn't participate in a class simply because their seat was taken by a child of school choice. I think that there is a time and a place for school choice. I just don't think that the school choice meets the standards for East Long Meadow's public schools at this point. public schools at this point in time for us to be considering it.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Trullio.
I think right now, we are fortunate in this town that our current budget is not dependent on use of school choice to kind of bolster and support the programs that we're able to provide our students. And like Sue, I am not a proponent of school choice at this time. I think it can also be a very divisive issue. Also seeing that, that debate that took place during the school committee meeting, it was a really engaging conversation, and a lot of valid points were brought to the table. But I think right now, given the fact that we're able to maintain our current services without including school choice as an option, I think we should continue that route. It can also be, as I mentioned, very divisive, and I think we have a lot of other topics currently that the school committee is taking on that are more pressing than necessarily pursuing school choice at this given moment. Our, our district already is enrolled and participates in MECO. I think we have a lot of opportunities that, within the town, that we're currently pursuing in terms of priority, and that we should stay the course with those. I think it's always great to revisit and have that conversation and to ensure continuity on the school committee itself. But at this point in time, I'm in agreement with the school committee that it's not something we should be pursuing based on where we are right now as a district and a community.
Awesome, thank you. Mrs. Trullio. District principals, along with IT Director Ryan Quimby, recently presented to the school committee their plan to expand technology in the district, so there will be one laptop per students, per student in grades three through 12. How do you view the role of technology in schools in the context of other needs? And given this year's budget constraints, how can the school committee successfully make this investment without cuts elsewhere?
Absolutely. I think the school committee and the school district leadership commitment to the one-to-one initiative is fabulous. I really can't speak enough to that. As you read through the curricular standards and you look at how our state accountability system is shifting to providing students the platform of an online test, we need to ensure that our students aren't, are not unable to show what they know in terms of the standards because they haven't had experiences with the device. We want the devices that our students are having at their disposal to really enhance their educational experiences. And in order to do that, they need to be really comfortable and familiar with them in an instructional and educational fashion. So I really applaud all the current leadership who has made that, made that commitment, not only through their SMART goals, but through the budget that they've tried to present and push forward with the town council. With that being said, I think we need to continue to explore opportunities for how we can be creative with this. I know that certain schools within town have already started to think about how they can reallocate building-based budgets to ensure that our students are getting access to devices, so that we're not just relying on the district making that commitment, but that the district's mission in terms of pursuing one-to-one is so, so believed in by the current administration at many of the buildings, that building principals are also really buying into that and are trying to reallocate their funds so that they can continue to provide those experiences to, to students. Also, with that being said, we have this set of standards that's come out from the state, the Digital Literacy and Computer Science Standards, that really focus on creating tech-savvy and computer science-literate students. The workforce is constantly changing, the economy is constantly evolving, and we want to ensure that our students have those educational experiences regarding digital literacy and computer science, so that they can really thrive in their post, post-high school lives. I think that as much as the device is important, we need to ensure that we're also training our educators to really ensure that they understand how that device is transformative in nature and is providing students with opportunities that otherwise would be unimaginable. So we need to continue to pursue that.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Mantoni.
I agree, you know, the 21st century learners are now using technology in the classrooms every single day. And so I know that the IT department has been working collaboratively with the, with the East Long Meadow Public Schools with grades, you know, three to 12, to implement the one-to-one technology for fiscal year 20. We are, I believe, 630, 630 Chromebooks away from achieving that goal. I know I've made my concerns regarding, from a fiscal responsible, responsible position, known and understand that the presentation to the school committee was only an introduction of, you know, what's to come. I'm looking forward to hearing more about this initiative and acknowledge that once this initiative is implemented, that the staff will need the support from an IT specialist and have some professional development, as the tools given to our schools are only as good as those, you know, who know how to use them appropriately. And I agree that, you know, we need to get the teachers on, on board with the one-to-one, because, you know, you just don't want these devices sitting in a classroom and collecting dust. You want to make sure that the kids are using these appropriately, and, you know, it's another resource for them, just like, you know, the other resources that they have, textbooks and, and the whiteboards. Technology nowadays is a growing, it's growing, and the kids are going to need it. So I think that the majority of the schools are leaning towards the one-to-one initiative, and I think that, you know, East Long Meadow schools would, would benefit from it, as long as we have the resources at hand to make sure that they're being used effectively.
Great, awesome, thank you. So as we touched upon before, Mrs. Mantoni, there's been a lot of recent discussions, a lot of recent discussion among the district to improve the quality of social emotional assistance throughout the district. This year, the school committee requested funding in the FY19 budget to add a special ed teacher with training in social and emotional support. The town council's budget subcommittee on Monday discussed reductions that would eliminate funding that position with any new budget, with any new money in next year's budget. How do you see the district improving social and emotional support in the coming years?
Social and emotional challenges are on a rise, and I think that, you know, we need to acknowledge that. And we currently don't have the programs in our school system to support the needs of these students, and therefore, a lot of these students are moved out of district. On the budget, with a supplemental request for the teacher, for a teacher with a training and social emotional support for grades six to eight is really a necessity right now. And, you know, this, this program is something that needs to be supported. So, you know, if the cuts have been made from town council to not support this supplemental request, it's going to be a challenge. But the school council is going to have to try to, school committee is going to have to try to find a way within the existing budget to get the middle school that support that they need. You know, the, the middle school has the greatest need for that program. And going forward to the high school, it's also going to be an impact on that level as well. If we can keep these students and give them the resources that they need to stay in district with their peers, it's a win-win for everyone, because there's also a benefit from a financial standpoint of keeping students within our district. So I just think that, you know, we need to find within the budget a way to support social emotional learning.
Awesome, thank you. Mrs. Trullio.
Thank you. I, again, would begin by praising the superintendent, senior leadership, for the emphasis they've placed on educating the whole child. It is in direct alignment with the state's initiative to really see social emotional learning as one of its key priorities. And I think when you, when you look at the budget and you look at the SMART goals of the district, social emotional learning is definitely one of the most key areas that every member of senior leadership and buildings is really prioritizing. So I think when you see something that's elevated to that state by real leaders in the field, we want to make sure that we're educating the committees who are making the decisions regarding how budgets and those types of items are determined. So I hope that we continue to engage in conversation, and that, as Sue mentioned, the programs are funded. But I think in addition to that, we really want to also work in partnership to, to look at the curricular documents that have been put forth by the state. Almost every single curricular document that's been, been put forth in terms of the new framework incorporates a social and emotional component, and there are a wide variety of resources available that support educators in understanding how the social and emotional connections can be made to the content that they're delivering. So I think as we continue to pursue social emotional learning experiences, that we also need to provide that experience and that professional development experience for educators, so that they can make those links, if we're not able to fully fund some of these positions. In addition, I think that we need to continue the great opportunities that have been provided to families. I know that many of the guidance departments over the past few years have put forth wonderful parent workshops in terms of, or family workshops in terms of being able to explore executive function, in terms of being able to explore stress and anxiety amongst students, and those have been really well attended. So I think as much as we want to say that we need the positions, which I 100% agree, we also need to continue to provide these learning opportunities for families and for, for all personnel, included teachers and senior leadership, so we can continue to have our students really thrive and that, and feel successful, not only academically, but in terms of their social experiences within schools.
Okay, so a follow-up question.
Sure.
How would you promote policies that address student stress, anxiety, and other social emotional concerns?
So I think, again, we want to look at and take our lead from the state. The state has made this one of its four main priorities moving forward in terms of being able to really note and seek the idea that if we want to make sure that our students are graduating college, career, and civic-ready, that we need to educate the whole child. So if we're not providing rich opportunities for our students to engage in discourse within classrooms, where they're learning to respectfully disagree with one another, then we're not necessarily providing them with those experiences. So I think as we think about policies, we need to fall in alignment with what the state is dictating, in order to ensure that we're able to really cultivate those skills within the students that we're serving within the town. Sorry, go ahead.
Great, thank you. So, Mrs. Mantoni, on the same question.
Okay. I think, I agree, I think that we need to follow the state guidelines, and that social emotional policies be put in place, there is a benefit to each and every student with social emotional learning. And so I do agree that we need to keep up to date with the policies and take a look at those and make sure that they are meeting, you know, within the state standards.
Great, thank you.
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
I apologize. Just the idea that we've talked a lot about school safety tonight, and school safety is really a hot topic across the country, across the world. And when we think about really being preventative, that really is where the social and emotional need stems from. So we want to make sure that we are really providing these authentic experiences for students in schools, not only so that they feel productive and contributing to their, their world as they know it, which is that school building, but also so that they're feeling supported in that larger community, and that we really can maintain the safety of our buildings.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Trullio. The East Long Meadow Public School District has a number of policies ranging from drugs and e-cigarettes to the student dress code. What do you believe the school committee can make, can do to make sure that policies are being enforced in order to ensure the schools are both safe, but also promote inclusivity?
Absolutely. So I think when we think about policies that are being implemented, one of the key features of that, any policy that's being implemented, is ensuring consistency and really having conversations among senior leadership at the buildings, district-level leadership, and including students and educators in on those conversations, because all of those folks are having, are feeling the impacts of a policy. So I know that Gina Flanagan was at a recent school committee meeting as well, discussing the dress code and, and talking about different policies and how they might need to be reworked based on the current, the current atmosphere of, of our, our world and our society. So I think, once we have those policies ironed out, and know they're going for a second reading pretty soon, to really be able to then say, how are we, as a district, going to be consistent in their implementation? And really, that's about educating everyone on what the policy means, and that includes families, students, educators, leadership, and then really ensuring that we have a real sense of fidelity, especially at the inception of when these policies actually hit the buildings, we're really being able to ensure that everyone fully understands it, so that they can consistently implement it, and that we can hold everyone accountable. Because if we're taking the time to really develop these policies, we want to make sure that they're, they're benefiting who we want them to benefit, which is our students, but that then we're also really making sure that we can pursue them in a way that isn't cumbersome and impeding the educational experiences of students, or preventing educators from providing that opportunity to actually provide the educational experiences our students need.
Mrs. Mantoni.
There's a purpose to have the policies, and I think that the school committee is doing a great job with updating and trying to keep current with, with, with our times. And I think that two important key words that Sarah has used just in her recent statement is consistency and accountability. There's a reason for these policies. And so I think that, and with the updates and keeping with the times, that, you know, we need to be consistent with what the policies, otherwise, why are they there? So, you know, and there needs to be accountability to follow through with the policies that are there. And I do think educating the student, educating the staff, educating the parents as well, so that they can really understand the purpose of these policies, why they've been put into place, and therefore, they'll adhere to them.
Okay. A follow-up question to that. What functionally constructive role should students have in policy development? Is there meaningful student input currently? And if not, what role should the school committee have in fostering more effective communication?
I think it would be wonderful if students would attend the school committee meetings. And then that way, they can give their statements so that they themselves can address their concerns, or their opinions, or their viewpoint directly with the school committee, so that when the school committee goes to do the readings and take a look at these policies, that they, they do hear the students and how they feel. And, you know, these students are affected by these policies on a daily basis. So I do think it's important to listen to the students, and I do think it's important for them to be heard. And I would welcome them, and I really hope that they would start coming to school committee meetings, so that they can share their perspective on how these policies are being made and how they are affecting them.
Mrs. Trullio.
Absolutely. I agree. I think that it was great, even seeing at the last school committee meeting, that there were representatives there really taking part in the public speak-out to talk about the potential changes to class ranking. So I think that we do have a very active student body, and I applaud them for, you know, really taking on that civic engagement, which is part of what the state is pursuing, and that's a great testament to that. In addition, I think that we need to continue to offer experiences to students beyond just the school committee. So I know that there was a town hall-style meeting where the, some high school students, again, were able to ask questions of the school committee. So I think we need to continue to include the voices of those who are impacted directly by the policies, so we can make sure that the policies are really supporting, so that the policies at their heart are really supporting who is being impacted by them, which is the student. So if we're putting policies in place that aren't necessarily impacting students in a positive fashion, we need to hear that, so we can then ensure that the policies that are implemented are done so in a way that is supportive of students and not seen as something that's hindering their experience.
Okay, great. So somewhat along the same lines, Mrs. Mantoni, how would you, as a school committee member, balance district governance and onsite decision-making from district, from principals in the district?
Repeat the question, I'm sorry.
So how would you, as a school committee member, balance, like, district governance from superintendent or school committee perspective and onsite decision-making from teachers or principals within the school?
It's a very good question. And how to balance between Mr. Smith's decisions versus onsite decisions that are being made? I think it's important for, I think we have, we've done a really good job hiring the administration that we currently have. And I think that we need to trust their decisions and where they're at on a daily basis with the students in their buildings. And so I think that, you know, communication between our administration and Mr. Smith is, is vital. And I think that if it's a situation that the administration needs to make a decision right there on the spot, then I think that we need to entrust that they're going to make the right decisions. Otherwise, if they have the chance to reach out to Mr. Smith and run by him the situation and kind of work together to collaborate and come together with a decision that needs to be made, then maybe that's, you know, probably the best way that we should move forward with that.
Awesome, thank you. And Mrs. Trullio.
Absolutely. So I think the way that the district is structured right now in terms of having district-wide SMART goals really provides the opportunity for senior leadership to kind of chart the course for where, as a whole, the five schools are headed. But I think then the locus of control and that autonomy that a building-level principal needs to be able to maintain, as a professional, to be able to make those decisions day in and day out is paramount. They are leaders by the very definition of their profession, and they need to be able to make decisions in a timely and decisive fashion, the same as an educator in a classroom. If they need to continue to have that collaboration and communication with the superintendent and central office staff, but they also need to be able to feel like they have the autonomy to really make decisions in the moment. And then I think if there are circumstances that warrant them having to really follow, follow up and have that communication with the superintendent and other members of his cabinet, then that is definitely in alignment, but that we have to also really see that each building and each, each building in town, in terms of the schools, really needs to have that autonomy to make decisions, because by definition, the principal is that leader, and needs to be seen as such, not only by the superintendent, but also by the teachers who they're charged with leading day in and day out.
Great, thank you. And so that's going to conclude the question and answer portion of tonight's debate. I'd now like to give each candidate 60 seconds for a closing statement, and Mrs. Mantoni, you may go first.
This year has been a very busy one, preparing for this campaign, but working with the students, parents, staff, and administration and community of East Long Meadow is an experience that I do look forward to every day. I am fortunate enough to have a career that allows me to have a flexible schedule that is necessary in order to give this committee the attention that it requires. I look forward to the opportunity to take a thriving district and make it better. This starts with effective communication from school committee to the town, and collaboration and continuity amongst our schools. The students of East Long Meadow Public Schools are our future, and with a top-notch education, we can not only educate our children to be 21 century learners, but to be global thinkers who will achieve all their dreams. My education in criminal justice, my experience working with individuals with disabilities, and financial knowledge will diversify this committee and provide value to areas within the district that need attention. I would appreciate your vote on Gina.
Thank you. And Mrs. Trullio. Mrs. Trullio.
Excellent. I have enjoyed running this campaign and getting to know so many different community members across my time seeking this seat. I think that my knowledge and experience as a 13-year public servant in Springfield Public Schools has really given me a toolset that will allow me to really hit the ground running if elected to the school committee seat. The field of education has changed dramatically within the last five years, and we really need to ensure that our school committee is diverse and has opportunities afforded to it based on, based on those changes and based on where we're going in terms of developing 21st century learners and leaders. So I think that the experiences and knowledge that I bring to the table would really allow me to pursue this seat and to really take an active role from the beginning. I look forward to meeting with voters going forward. I look forward to continuing to have conversations with Sue and with other members of, of the school committee and other members of senior leadership. And I respectfully ask for voters to come out and vote for me on June 5th. Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks both of you for coming out tonight, and I urge all viewers to head out and vote on June 5th at Bertram Park Middle School in the annual town election.